Roll call of directors.
Alice.
Here.
Barnes.
Here.
US.
Here.
Gorman, here.
Kaiser.
Here.
Kropkeimer, here.
Field.
Yes.
Tomchek.
Hello.
Ziegler, here. And Brett Carley. All present with students.
Thank you. Ted, head nerd retreats and pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four is the approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Motion.
The motion by Tomchek, seconded by Kropkeimer, to approve the agenda as presented. Further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting on February 27th, 2018. We have a motion by Tomchek, seconded by Kaiser, to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes on February 27th. Further discussion from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I see.
Okay, one extension, zero. That motion carries as well. Item number six is the public forum. Public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. Then all operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the meeting. As far as to addressing the board, please clearly state your name and address. Is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to address the board? Single hands, ask a second time, is there anyone who would like to address the board? And a third time. Anyone who'd like to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll move on to item number seven, which is the student board member report. Do we have a report?
Um, yep, it was linked in your board cabinet. Is everybody okay with just?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's compie that.
I won't, uh, I won't go through it if you've all read that.
Any comments from the board, any questions? We'll move on to item number eight, which is old business. Item number eight A is discussion and possible decision, school safety.
So this agenda item, we talked about last, um, at our last board meeting, and what I asked, um, off of your recommendation, is I asked Mr. Hayes, um, from our community, if he would join our board and to just share with the board, I gave him our crisis plan, shared with Mr. Hayes some of the things that we're doing. He has some great input on things that we can change and do differently, and how we can add and improve our school security. So, wondering if you want to come up and join us here, have a seat? And Ted, for those that don't know you, why don't you give them some background on?
Sure. I'm Ted Hayes, I've been a school safety and security consultant for thirty years. I started when I was six years old. Uh, nineteen ninety-eight, I wrote a book called, uh, Not in My School, Preventing Active Shooter. Two thousand fourteen, I wrote my second book, It's Predictable, It's Preventable. I have a website that, uh, I share nationwide with, you see three blogs right in the middle. Uh, I'm always writing free blogs for schools across the country to share. I write the majority of them, some I don't. Like the very first one there, another school shooting, that's about Parkland and the practice of luring, pulling kids out in the hallway with, uh, pulling the fire extinguisher. But I speak all over the country. I have a training partner, Mike Bolander, he's with the Oak Creek Police Department. He himself has been into active shooter scenarios. Uh, we have a very detailed program that we talk about life-saving tips when facing an active shooter. Uh, we do visual weapon screening. Uh, what I do separate from that, I do, uh, physical security assessments of schools. Uh, I review crisis plans for schools. And, uh, I get right down to the brass hats. I don't come in and put fluff on it. There's, there's a lot of junk out there right now, there's a lot of companies trying to sell you the latest, greatest gadget. If you buy this, your school will be safer. It comes down to three things, three, four things. Lock your doors, your external doors. Remove external door hardware. Tell your kids they're gonna come in through certain doors, one or two, not five or six. Start locking your classroom doors. Practice what I call rapid response lockdown and evacuation. The elementary kids gotta get good at lockdown, kids, teachers gotta get good at rapid response lockdown because you cannot evacuate little people. It's like herding cats, and you have nowhere to run them, you got nothing but field and cemetery. So you gotta get good at lockdown. This article right here, Life Saving Tips When Facing An Armed Intruder/Active Shooter, uh, that's my training partner, his back to you there, Mike, we train all over the country. We took, came up with, we think, either thirty-five things that, to prevent and to live through an active shooter. A shooter's looking for three things, easy targets, opportunity, they're probably hunting one person, if they can't find them, they'll shoot whoever. They want little or no barricades or restrictions, and they want little or no supervision or confrontation. So anytime you can put obstacles in front of any of those three things, you're way ahead of the game. Most active shooter situations are over in under five minutes. That means probably, unless you have a school resource officer, you're not gonna have law enforcement there to take care of the situation. And that's one of the problems that all schools have in this country. We don't honor the input of law enforcement. Uh, they got great ideas, get cops into schools, and I train so many schools that the school develops their own crisis plan, and I said, where's your input with the police department? Oh, they're gonna respond, well, if we haven't involved them, we'll let them know. And that's not the way to do it. There's, really, there's a lot of simple things you can do. Uh, one thing I'll offer, you know, I'll do it free of charge, is to walk around, I did a security audit a couple of years ago in the high school, I don't remember exactly when. But, uh, you know, I'll go through the other schools with the right appropriate people and identify some things, I'm not gonna write them down, I'll let you do that for liability reasons. Uh, one thing, a couple of things I look at, if you look at that room security controls handout, um, this is not your crisis plan, but this is a document that I wanna see in every classroom. I wanna see it in, uh, the gym, cafeteria, theater department, tech ed, and you're asking whoever is in charge of that area to fill this document out. How do I call 911? Where's my crisis plan? What's my action script? Meaning, what am I gonna do if a crisis occurs? They gotta know that along ahead of, ahead of time. How do I secure my doors? Meaning, what objects am I gonna use to barricade that door, and in what order? Identify the fatal funnel in your room. That's an area that if I shot through your door, uh, I would hit somebody, and we can identify the funnel in every room. Like right here, if we shot through this door, probably in on over, that's where we wanna be in this room to stay out of what's called the fatal funnel. How do my windows open? If they don't open, how do I break them? And there's an art to breaking a window and getting kids out of a window. So there's some other things on your, if you could just page down a little bit, uh, a little more, I list, just put down emergen, where's your emergency equipment? The reason I put fire extinguisher on there? Fire extinguisher is the best weapon in an active shooter situation. Fire extinguisher, you can put out a fire, you can discharge it in someone's face to buy time to act. You can, uh, break a window with it, you can hit them in the head with it, hit the shooter. I teach run, hide, fight. Uh, some instances, you hide first, and that's your only option. You run, you, you lock down, and you're always looking to get out of that area if you can. So we're locked down, but we're always trying to evacuate. Again, we're not gonna do that with elementary children, and the last resort is fight. Uh, I, I differ, there's programs out there like Alice training, you may have heard of that. Uh, we, I go deeper than Alice. I, I can shoot a lot of holes in the Alice program, that, uh, I take it deeper to educate the teachers of what exactly they need to do. So then I just ask them to put down important numbers, people get, give help, contact numbers, and the last page is the fatal funnel. I ask the teacher to draw out the fatal funnel in their room where they do not wanna be, if there's a shooter in the school, and I ask them to draw in the furniture that they're gonna use, and where is it located, the barricade, the door? So they know exactly where they're gonna place children in their room. And what we're finding out through testing is one, a safe, not the safe vest, but a safe place to put a, a child in a room, if your walls are drywall, if they're not cement, is near the door on either side, low to the ground, 'cause the shooter shoots through the door, center mass, knees and above. Or, we take little people, we put them real high in a classroom, we wanna keep them out of that kill zone in the middle where everybody puts kids now. So, that's a document I offer up to you, that, you know, every teacher, every custodian, food service worker fills that out, you have a substitute teacher comes into your school, you tell them in the morning, review that document. If it happens today, you gotta be last. You're gonna have a teacher, uh, the principal, he is not gonna be in his office when there's a school shooting, he's gonna be in a classroom, he's gonna be able to grab this and act and know what to do in that scenario. So, any questions on this? Am I overwhelming you?
Very good.
Okay. The last document here, oh, visitor identification. I developed a cheat sheet, I hope it's the way up. Uh, it's a cheat sheet I developed with my training partners, some of the common characteristics of someone who may be carrying a weapon into your school. What we're looking for is cluster patterns. Uh, so if I see someone who's nervous, or they're muttering to themselves, doesn't mean they're gonna come in with a gun to the school, but we start seeing a cluster of these characteristics, it's something to worry about. So I make sure, when I, when I train school staff members, that they clearly understand these different cluster characteristics, and say, you start seeing these things, uh, it's time to tell somebody. It's even time to, I've been gone too long, do you still have a school resource officer?
He's right here.
How are you?
Yeah, Eric.
It's time to call him.
He's full-time now.
I don't think he's ever gonna say, no, I'm not gonna come outside and look at that stranger. But teachers are hesitant to do that. So we put these clusters together to identify, uh, a strange individual on school grounds. So I also do, uh, visual weapon screening, things, there's very telltale characteristics if someone's carrying a weapon in their closet or on their body, that I teach to, uh, school staff. And then the last document, if you could pull that up, please. I reviewed your crisis plan, and everything in red is the changes I'm making, or I'm, I'm just offering, if we, we stay up towards the top there, I'll go through kinda fast. It's too long, and because in a crisis situation, you have split second to react, you're not gonna look things up in your crisis plan. I wanna see a pink cover on the crisis plan, 'cause pink is obnoxious, no one's wearing pink.
Yeah.
So, you know, you'll be able to see that in an emergency situation. You alphabetize it, L-E-A-B-C-D, lockdown first, evacuation second, the most important. Uh, have a separate document for your lockdown and evacuation. You have it in the same place in every room. Do not hang it by the door, because your shooter is already in the school, or it's a former student. Don't give them the plan of what you're gonna react, so make sure it's in the same desk drawer in every room, so you can get to it. You need to review it four to six times a year with your staff. So I just went through it, you guys, all of you can, uh, read my comments, uh, things I made about your bomb threat. I focused on your bomb threat and your lockdown and evacuation protocols. And, uh, I just think I, you know, I, I can help you with your crisis plan, uh, you will, you will still have to customize it to fit the Mozzamee schools, but, uh, I have to get by bomb threat here, yeah, you'll see, I made a lot of different, a lot of different comments on announcing a lockdown, uh, dismissing from a lockdown. I like a program called the Red Card, Green Card. You know what that is? Do you like it?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's half the battle, and law enforcement has to buy into that. So, you know, those are different things I can help you implement.
And, um, so we appreciate you taking, going through all that. Eric, uh, Eric has had some thoughts too, and thought some of your stuff was great, and so we're excited to be able to sit down and, and to be able to build on what we're currently doing, because I, I certainly think we can improve. We can definitely improve. Ted, you had a good comment, though, um, when you and I talked just about, you know, I, I think I told you about the windows, and, you know, we're gonna work on glass, and we're gonna work on all of that kinda stuff, and, and you said, train your staff, Ann.
Oh, about breaking?
Be a better, yeah, do a better job training your staff, rather than...
Right, yeah, don't, physical controls, um, the answer is not to get a, you have a resource officer, he trains every day, whether it goes into a bar fight, it, it is a tactical situation, 'cause he has to control his weapon and maneuver around a potential hostile crowd. You do not arm teachers. They're there to teach, they have no idea how to handle this type of situation. So let him do his job, the physical controls, lock the exterior doors, lock the interior classroom doors, know how you're gonna barricade that door, know how you're gonna evacuate, and the windows, you know, everybody wants to get into putting bullet-resistant covering on doors, which is great, Dick Peterson is right here in Mozzamee, who installs it for 3M, I recommend him to, to many of my clients, but...
He's gonna give us a bid in April.
Yeah, you only put it on certain doors and windows, 'cause if you put it on every window, you can't get out of that window.
Right.
So, just get good at controlling your classroom with rapid response lockdown, rapid response evacuation.
So we're gonna invite you to come in and be a part of, um, hopefully to, you know, get a, a time with you to talk about training our staff. But I think one of the biggest things that, that you said is, we do an annual training, and, and Ted's like, Ann, that's not enough.
Yeah, you, you gotta hit this when you come back from Christmas break, spring break, at the beginning of the year. Uh, I call them, uh, five-minute Fridays and ten-minute Tuesdays. Just pick something out of your plan and say, we're gonna, five minutes to your lockdown protocol, ten minutes on your evacuation protocol, and just throughout the year, you just have to keep it in front of people time and time again.
Questions from the board?
Questions and thoughts?
We are, we're gonna bring Mr. Hayes on.
You better work out the details of that.
I, I read through your material, I was very impressed, there wasn't anything that I thought, doesn't make sense to me. One of the challenges this board has to deal with is, to share my opinion, that we have significant facility-related issues in how do we lock our doors, and what procedures are in place to make sure that those individuals that are in our school during this school day are the people we want in our schools? And whose responsibility is it, and how, what doors are open, when are they closed? Procedure-wise, and who's responsible for that? And there's obviously a cost associated with some of those things that we're gonna need to do is, let's, there's, there's dealing with your staff and training and coming up with, uh, their ability to react to a situation, there's also the job of this board to be able to fund and make sure that our facilities are, are hardened targets to the best of their ability, that keep a shooter from maybe even considering coming to our school. And, and that's a challenge that I'm, I'm not sure we're real clear. What's step one in figuring out, what's the best way to secure our schools and make them as safe as possible?
Want me to be real honest?
Sure.
Step one is stop, start educating teachers that you can't stick a pizza box in the door, 'cause I'm gonna run out to my car for a second. Or they know how to jiggle a door to get it open, or I'm gonna wedge the door, 'cause I'm going out for recess. The shooter follows a path of least resistance, they're gonna either come in with kids, or they're gonna follow a door that's open. Usually, food service, because I'm not being sexist, that's where we have female employees, and the door's open for deliveries. Theater, that room's always open, people coming and going. Uh, tech ed classes, and we just have to get the word out hard and strong to the staff that all doors must be locked, and that's why I say, remove the exterior door hardware. Take it off, so they can't even get in. There's only designated doors that they can come back in, if they, like, if they can get in, it's a FOB system, so they can get back into the school. So, if we start right there, and when I make recommendations, I rarely make recommendations to buy this product or buy new doors, but there's ways to work around all of that to harden your schools. And then the teachers need to keep their school, or their classroom door locked at all times. They can keep it open, but it's locked. So if they gotta lock down, alls they simply have to do is slam it shut, or pull it shut, or whatever. And then the next layer in, like the, you know, an onion skin, we got exterior, interior, then the classroom, identify the objects that you're gonna use to barricade the door. I walk around with teachers, and I show them how to barricade their door, and they'll have a filing cabinet over there, and I'll say, put it right there, and they'll, I like it there. No, you aren't gonna be able to drag it from there to there in a second and a half, we need to put it on carpet runners, so you can just get it in front of the door. And then I, then I go to the windows and show them how to break a window, and say, what tool do you have to break a window? Well, computer chair, I say, you'll never break a window with that. Get a brick on a rope that you keep in your, uh, desk drawer, have a fire extinguisher, best tool to break a window. So I teach them how to get back out of those scenarios. The other thing I focus on too is a mass notification system. If, I don't know what you have universally through the schools to notify of an intruder in the school. I, I don't get paid by this company, I, I am on their advisory board, anytime they develop a new product, they run it by me. It's called Crisis Go, it's all one word. And if you call them and tell them, my kids went here, they'll even give you a bigger break on price, but I, I do not get paid by them. I love their system, because it's cheap, they, you pay per student, they take everybody's cell phone number, and everybody's computer information, load it into your system, they put in your crisis plan, anyone can activate it, and it takes over your phone, it takes over your computer instantly, if there's an emergency, and it tells you what to do, where you are for that crisis. It's a fabulous system. Uh, a lot of my school districts, the Farland Schools has it, uh, Stevens Point, Oregon School District have put it in. To me, it's the best system out there, but maybe you have a mass notification system? What I look for is all your staff members, uh, can, can initiate a lockdown or evacuation. I don't know if you can do that now, can you pick up a phone in any school and make an announcement? I don't know. So, that's something we have to decide on a school-to-school basis.
Don't worry, Brent, we're not talking a lot of money.
Really, our next step is to sit down and do that audit with you, um, if you'd be willing to come through, and we'll schedule that, that time where we can come through and do an audit, and I'll invite the principals and Eric, um, and our staff to sit down and do that audit, and this could be a continued standing board agenda, I think we bring it back next month and tell you, this is what we've done.
We probably shouldn't be doing that, I used to, I don't remember, I was so many years ago.
Well, I will tell you that off of your recommendation, we've done a number of things. That's when we did, that's why we implemented training, that's why we did, there's just a number of things that we've done, so, we could, but we can definitely improve on that.
Well, Ann, and I gotta believe too, once you start setting something up, you can almost put something in, in Skywater system, it's gonna automatically kick back when, you know, especially when you get new staff.
Oh, right.
Automatically that they've gotta be put on and sign that they went through this training.
Yeah.
You know, and, and a timeline, you know, every sixty days, every ninety days, whatever, that, that's gonna automatically...
The frequency, Diane, that, that frequency really hit me, when he, when he said that to me, I went, yep, the annual is on, uh, our due. And although we do do trainings, like middle school just went through a training, I think, Jeff Soderberg, I saw your information out there, you guys were just going through your drill again. Um, how often do you drill, Jeff?
Uh, we did a complete evacuation in the fall, uh, and then just recently, we just did a, a lockdown only, so we've done it twice, and we'll, we'll do one more.
Yeah.
And that doesn't include the fire drills that we do.
Right.
Are you training with students, Jeff?
Uh, the complete evacuation, I think all the buildings did with the kids, yeah.
And the lockdowns are with the kids?
And the lockdowns are with the kids.
Understand, it's changed with evacuation, I teach you how to evacuate five hundred yards from the school when you have a shooter. Shoot, uh, shooting situations are changing, the, the fake media is pumping these out, and they said, to date, there's been nineteen school shootings. Not true, there's been nine. The other ones were suicides or drive-by shootings, but they're pumping it out, and what you're doing is you're feeding into the shooter that they're going for the call, the kill count, just like a video arcade game. So what they're go, where it's evolving to is, if you read that first article on my website sometime, I'm luring, where they're pulling kids out into the hallway to, to have a lot of targets in front of them. I was in the governor's office last Monday, they asked, 'cause he's got his bill coming up, and I said, one thing we have to change, I get it wrong, I think it's state statute, it's either 309 or 390, one or the other, but you have to do unannounced fire drills?
You have to do one fire drill, one more.
Unannounced? And I'm saying, change that, it's gotta be announced to the staff, because we don't wanna fire drill, or a fire alarm pulled, and everybody acts and it's a shooter. That's where it's going, that, that's gonna be the new thing with shootings, is drawing the targets out to you, 'cause the shooters know that the classrooms are being secured, they're pull, trying to pull them out as best they can, so. I'm not a believer in practicing, uh, lockdown or evacuation drills with students, and I know I'm one of the few that thinks that way, I get it, but like I said, your shooters are already in the building, especially in high school, you're playing them, you're playing into their hands, they'll say, oh, that's how they're gonna go. Or it says in your crisis plan, we go to St. Mark's Church, or whatever. You don't wanna do that. Secondly, do everything in your power to keep your crisis plans out of the hands of the public or the parents. You don't have to broadcast it to everybody that this is our protocols, 'cause the shooters are researching this. I go on so many school websites, I guess, all over the country, they contact me and say, will you review our crisis plan? Sure, send it to me. What's out on your webpage? Wrong. I'm the shooter, I'm gonna read your crisis plan, I'm gonna act on that. So if you can, anything you can do with your power not to tell the public what your crisis plan is, you're ahead of the game. Well, thank you for coming. You're welcome.
What bothers me more so is our loading and unloading of students plus lives, there is a big number of students there.
A shooter wants easy targets, opportunity, they want little or no supervision or confrontation. So we wanna make sure we have supervision out there with orange vests on. When you can, have a police car out there during the loading and unloading, 'cause the shooter doesn't wanna see that, 'cause they know, this isn't gonna end well for me. And you wanna make sure you're, in the wintertime, your supervisor's got orange gloves on, with a big black cellphone or a walkie-talkie in their hand, 'cause the shooter will see they have instant communication, this is gonna end fast for me. They attack when they don't have supervision, and they're not gonna attack if there's an empty police car sitting there, even, you know, a police officer out there, or driving by on a regular basis.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you for your time, Mr. Hayes.
I'll be, Ted, I might be able to speak. I'll wait to hear from you.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that, so we'll get, we'll get a meeting scheduled in together, and I appreciate all the talking that you've done with me. Appreciate that.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Ann, your plan would be like, just have it to be a standing agenda item at the next meeting?
Yes.
Matt, here's what we talked about, we're gonna review the school, here's some, just keep moving.
Until we get to the point where we're like, you know, I mean...
Resources, what do you need?
Yeah, yeah, because I think it will evolve, so I would just, let's do a standing agenda item, and then we'll process.
Okay, we'll move on to item number nine, which is new business. Line A is discussion and possible decision and approval of the resolution, authorizing issuance and awarding the sale of seventeen million, how do you even know, no, no? Sixteen million, five hundred and ten thousand dollars in general obligations for building, and funding bonds, providing, and bonds, levying a tax in connection with, I don't know, presumably, something to change at the beginning. That dollar amount for this meeting, Brent, seventeen million, thirty thousand dollars?
We have Jeff Sealy here to tell you both what happened today.
Thank you, thank you, very nice to be here, thanks for having me. Uh, we did, um, do a competitive sale of your bond this morning, and, uh, you have a resolution, resolution is to award the sale of bonds to the little bidder, and you have a sale date in front of you, and this would be the detail of the bid results today. So, um, as you know, there's two components to this bond, it's a single bond, but there's two different purposes. One is to refund the note anticipation notes, that's your energy project, uh, and, and a little over four million is for your science edition. Um, you do have a very nice credit rate for Moody's, a double A2, we went through that process again, uh, whenever you issue bonds, you go through that process of credit rating. For a, um, district of your size and location, double A2 is a very, very strong rating. You have very strong internal financials, um, sometimes you'll see schools with double A2 rating who may not be as strong internally, but they're near a very large economic center, so they get the benefit of their location. In this case, um, you're receiving a very high rating, pretty much solely because of your internal finances, so very good job on that. Um, we did receive nine bids. Now, generally, we see about six bids, so you see a lot of interest on your bonds nationwide. Steeple Nicholas was the low bid, and if you wanna see who else bid, starting on Page Three, Steeple Nicholas, out of Colorado, uh, they combined with Northland Securities and Ziegler, and then Piper Jeffrey, out of Minneapolis, USP, out of New York, uh, Raymond James of Florida, Jenny Montgomery Scott out of Philadelphia, Baird out of Milwaukee, JP Morgan out of New York, and Citigroup out of New York, and RBC Capel Markets out of New York. And RBC Capital Markets, out of New York. So, uh, you did receive a lot of interest. Nine bids, the low bid was three point oh-six, and the high bid, three point two-seven. Now, uh, there was a sufficient interest in this, that the winning bidder, Steeple, actually had these all pre-sold, all the bonds pre-sold by the time they submitted the bid. We don't see that very often. Again, high credit rating, very good credit rating. Um, so, uh, because of the large premium that we received, we were able to reduce the bond amount from seventeen million, five hundred and ten thousand to seventeen million, thirty thousand. And your total net P and I in the middle of the page is twenty-three million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Now, the bids were, the three point oh-six was over a full percentage less than estimated. We were estimating about four point oh-nine. The difference between the estimate and how they actually came in saved you about two point three million dollars in overall debt service. So, in a nutshell, that's the results. Um, we did include, uh, your sourcing uses on page eight. The refunding demand is the energy project, the science edition, and then the totals there. You can see the R amount, the premiums, and so forth. Um, page nine is your full principal and interest payment schedule for everything. And then page ten breaks it down for the energy project, and that's important. And page eleven for the science, uh, side of things. And then page twelve is the estimated, um, tax impact prior to sale, and what it actually